Call this meeting over. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Backus.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Yep.
Mrs. Dean.
Here.
Mr. DeFrancesco.
Here.
Mr. Giraud.
Here.
Mr. Geisweig.
Here.
Mr. Gulick.
Here.
Mr. Johnston.
Here.
Recommend approval of the meeting minutes as listed and attached.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under public address, we have a representative from Sagertown High School. Mr. Schellenberger is here to address the board.
Good evening. My name is Sam Schellenberger, and I would like to bring you up to speed on stuff that's happening at Sagertown High School. BN, fall sports are underway. The Lady Panthers volleyball team is currently 3-0, and the golf team has won three out of the four matches. The building looks great with the new decor and the new signage out front. Sagertown High School is proud to report that we have 10 AP Scholars for the 2018-19 school year. To be named an AP, Advanced Television Scholar, a third quest score and a three on at least three AP exams. Open house was held on August 26th. Many people said they're the most people they've seen at an open house for many years. The marching band is off to a great start with their show, "The Ark of Madness." They performed in an exhibition at General McLean last Saturday, and will be performing this Saturday at McDowell. Many things will be happening in the next month at SHS. Picture day will be on Wednesday, September 18th. On September 19th, all eighth graders will be traveling to, will be attending a career fair at Edinburgh University. Homecoming is week of October 4th. We will have the formal assembly, a fall sports assembly, and the homecoming dance that week. We face Mercer in the homecoming game on Friday night. On September 20th, 40 students will travel to P Compete's high ropes course for physical education field training. The Panther Press has named their staff for the year, and I am the editor in chief. Our first issue will be released October 4th. You will receive a copy at the October 10th board meeting at Cambridge Springs High School. We have 963 followers on Twitter and 519 Instagram followers. We would like to cross 1,000 within the school year. Please follow us on Twitter, @PantherPressSHS. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you.
Good job.
Any PAA representative today? No registered citizens comments? We'll begin with the athletic committee. Mr. Gulick, chairman. Recommend approval to accept the resignation. I'm Michelle Craig, from her duties as football cheerleader advisor at Cambridge Springs Junior Senior High School effective September 3rd.
On behalf of the committee, I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item two, coaches. Recommend approval of the coaches as listed, 1 through 4.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Education committee, Mr. Brooks, chairman. Item A. Recommend approval of the 2019-20 Flexible Instruction Day application to the PA Department of Education as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B. Recommend approval of the student-teacher affiliation agreement between Grand Canyon University and the Penn Crest School District as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item C. Recommend approval of the memorandum of understanding between Penn Crest School District and the Crawford County Systems of Care as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item D was added between Monday's meeting and tonight. We're recommending approval of Betsy Totten to attend the Reading Recovery Teacher Leader Institute at the Hampton School District on October, I'm sorry, thank you, Hempfield School District on October 10 and 11 as required by the reading recovery program.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item six, Facilities Transportation Committee, Mr. Johnston, chairman. Item A. Recommend approval of parent-provided transportation agreement as listed.
Committee, I make a recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B. Recommend approval of Beverly Myers as a van driver for RD Wyckoff.
Yeah, committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item seven, Finance Committee, Mr. Brown, chairman. Item A. Recommend approval of the treasurer's reports as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B. Recommend approval of the disbursements as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item C. Recommend approval of 2017-18 School-Based Access Program Billing Agreement with IU5 for the reimbursement to the district in the amount of $68,804.02 as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item D. Recommend approval of the pricing agreement with Kelly Educational Staffing as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item E. Recommend approval of agreement with interim healthcare of Erie for healthcare staffing as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item F. Epic Communications Agreement. Recommend approval of the Epic Communications Agreement for E-Rate year '23, 2020, 2021 as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item G. Recommend approval to contract with Heather Reicher for videography and production services as a cost not to exceed $4,000.
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Personnel Committee, Mrs. Dean, chairperson. I'd like to have a consent agenda, if that's okay. I use A through F.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Item nine, Policy Committee, Mr. DeFrancesco, chairman. Recommend approval of policies as listed and attached.
I'm hoping to accept the recommendation, committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 10, School Safety Committee, Mr. Backus, chairman. Just some information items. We've attached a Crawford County Summit scheduled for October 17th at MASH. From 6:00 to 8:00, it is open to the public. We have this information posted all around the school and have had it up for about six months now. Additionally, Penn Crest, specifically Maplewood High School, will be hosting a family reunification Pima course on October 30th. This is the second of such presentations throughout the state. We are also going to be applying for the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. We have a meritorious application of $40,000 and can apply for competitive application up to $450,000. We are working to gather what the need is, and we'll talk in the safety committee and report back for board approval in October as the grant deadline is November 4th. Crawford County Career Technology Center, Mr. Johnson, representative?
I wasn't at the meeting, so I have nothing.
All right. Intermediate Unit 5 report, Mr. Brooks, do you have any report?
They're starting their audit up there at the IU5. They discussed, there's a lot of discuss, discussion on charter school reform. The governor has a proposal out there, legislative, there's comment section or comment period. So it was a good time to reach out if you have any thoughts on that. That was it.
Thank you. PSBA Legislature Report, Mr. Gulick?
I have nothing to say for that.
Brings us to new business.
Mr. President, I have two motions I'd like to introduce. The first motion will be a resolution supporting House Bill 76 and Senate Bill 76. That will be the Property Tax Independent Act. And if it's okay with you, Mr. President, I'd like to read the resolution.
Yeah, tell us a little bit.
Whereas, whereas, the constitution of this Commonwealth demands that the General Assembly provide maintenance and support of a thorough and efficient system of public education to serve the needs of the Commonwealth. And whereas, the constitutional Commonwealth demands that all taxes are uniform upon the same class of subjects. And whereas, school property taxes are now uniform from one property owner to another. And too many residents of school districts are losing or are in the verge of losing their property for the lack of revenue to pay their property taxes. And that the high cost of public pensions to local taxpayers will make matters worse. And the present funding system shows gross inequities with negative results on local taxpayers and the local economy. And property taxes are regressive and an obstacle to local economic growth. Now be resolved, the Penn Crest School District declares its support of House Bill 76 and Senate Bill 76. As the school director seek to enforce the constitutionality of the Commonwealth responsibility to support of a thorough and efficient system of public education to serve the needs of all in the Commonwealth, that they request the governor and General Assembly to enact House Bill 76 and Senate Bill 76 into law of the Commonwealth. And be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Governor Tom S. Wolf, the Pennsylvania Secretary of Education, the Speaker of the House, and the President of the Senate and legislators representing parents in the school district.
That's my motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this?
If anybody has any question about Senate Bill 76, I have it right here.
Would you read it, please?
Sure. I read through it a lot. And, you know, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead and read it.
Senate Bill 76, enact providing for tax levies and information related to taxes, authorize the imposition of personal income tax or earned income tax by the school district subject to voter approval, which the way I understand is that this would affect only the residents of the district. The first portion. Providing for imposition of and exclusion from a sales and use tax for stabilization of education funding, for increase for personal income tax for certain licenses, for hotel occupancy tax for procedure and administration of the tax, for expiration of authority to issue certain debt, and for reporting by local government units of debt outstanding. Establishing the Education Stabilization Fund, providing for disbursement from the Education Stabilization Fund, and for senior citizens' property tax, rent rebate assistance, and making refunds. That's all. In short, that's what the Senate Bill is.
So like I said, I'm pretty sure, you know, I will say that I'm an opponent of finding another way of paying for our kids' education rather than through property tax. But unfortunately, in our government, we add all sorts of crap into a bill. It's just, it's just, from what I gathered, it's so watered down with this and that and this and that. You know, for me, it's not a, although it's got some validity to it, I won't say that it does not, but I just think there's a lot of too much, or there's too much of, I need this and I need this, or this bill works, so for me, it's.
And the other thing I, well, I'm trying to gather on that bill, too, the personal income tax and sales tax, which that's all, it all sounds great, trust me, I love to lose my property tax, but how is Penn Crest going to get the monies properly? Compared, now we're competing with Philadelphia, we're competing with Harrisburg, the bigger school districts, or the city of Erie, who's, what, back to me, and how many millions of dollars? I'm for it, but I'd really like to see how the money's going to be dispersed so our $53 million budget, Brian, frankly, that we're still going to get the monies needed. And if there's an increased cost, how are we going to make sure that that's, you know what I mean, Luigi?
Yes.
It takes it out of our hands, as, no, we can't. We won't be able to, as a body, like, I mean, like, right now, you can obviously raise taxes, but we can't, we can't raise sales tax. We can't raise personal tax, that's going to come from.
Way higher.
Way higher. So I, although, like I said, although I agree with a big piece of that, I just think that there's too much side stuff, and they just don't have, right now, they just don't have enough.
I mean, other states do it, and are very, fairly successful at it, and I think we could do it. But so far, what I've read of this bill, I haven't gone all the way through, but I need more time than this, but there's a lot of questions I have, so I need to read it.
I, too, would like to see a guarantee that we're going to get sufficient funding. I mean, it all sounds great, sounds, you know, like.
I certainly would say, Luigi, at least it's sparking the, it's sparking the interest of lords, not just here, but everywhere. For hopefully that we can get our lawmakers to try and put something forth that's got a little more meat to it. A little more, not meat, but a little bit more, for us smaller districts like this, a little more assurance that our money is not going to go to.
Are we going to be in the right?
Right.
Are we going to get what we, and how, if they would just say how we're going to do this, how the school districts are going to apply, and, you know, Brian says, hey, here's our budgets, $53 million.
It's not rocket science to be able to take.
Yeah, and they say, oh, okay. Here's your check.
To take the sales tax and increase it by 2% and start, you know, starts taxing everything rather than just.
Oh, thank you.
You were definitely bringing up funding to the state to do this.
I would just add that there's a couple bills out there to eliminate property taxes. You know, this one's been out there for a while, it's not gotten a lot of traction. There's another one out there. That one's got some interesting things to it, where you're taxing senior citizens' income and things like that, retirement income.
Right.
There's a discussion about, I'm not sure that 76 is better than the other ones. The funding levels for this are concerning just due to it's attached to the inflation rate, and the state increases expenses at a rate higher than what the inflation rate is, so there'd be a lot of moving pieces that don't necessarily tie in directly to this. I think there's a lot of movement right now on getting rid of property taxes, I'm just not sure that Bill 76 versus some of the other bills that are out there, you know, there's not much advantage for us to endorse 76 over some of the other ones that are out there. If we did them all and just said, we want to eliminate property taxes and eliminate through other means, you know, I would certainly be all for that, but Bill 76 is one of many out there, and I'm not sure the difference between any other ones.
Could I, yeah, just a point of order question, I guess. If a member brings up a motion, and it's voted on and voted down, are they permitted to bring that same motion up again?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, well, in that case, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone Mr. DeFrancesco's motion indefinitely.
That's, that's a motion to be.
Notice, not under Robert's rules. Postpone indefinitely, you can only table if there's something more important on the table. You can postpone indefinitely if you choose not to vote on it.
Never the.
I will say.
Not sure about that.
Look it up. It's in there. I found distribution to school, I found one thing on distribution to schools. If I could read it real quick. Property Tax Independent Act Works to Fully Fund All Pennsylvania Schools. All schools will initially be fully funded at their current levels.
Initially.
Initially, yeah. That word's scary. Schools will receive their property tax replacement funding directly from the state. The Property Tax Independent Act will fully fund all districts by replacing the property tax dollar, dollar for dollar, at each district's current level. All students of Pennsylvania, regardless of their location or their area's economic condition, will have the opportunity for equal education. Equity in schools is guaranteed because the state assumes responsibility of school funding. Each school will receive the resources it needs regardless of the local ability to pay. This solves the funding problems faced by rural, urban, and fast-growing districts. The Property Tax Independent Act calls for dedicated lockbox account for all property tax replacement revenues that is separate from the general fund. All replacement funding for the schools will be dispersed from this account through the existing Department of Education funding mechanism, requiring no growth of the current infrastructure. In addition, the Property Tax Independence Act completely eliminates taxing ability of local school boards. The only exception would be a possible local EIT or personal income tax for major private, such as school construction, and that will be subject to a no-exemption taxpayer referendum.
So is initially, we would be funded, but after that, it's up to the state whether we're going to do it? With no, with no.
Well, it says that there, that no school would be left without, without, without being funded, so it's just a matter of.
It says equity in schools is guaranteed because the state assumes the responsibility of school funding. But at first, all schools will initially be fully funded.
Well, definitely, there'll be like polls, or, I mean, there'll be stipulations, because otherwise, contracts for negotiations, nobody would care anymore. You'd be like, yep, whatever, whatever, doesn't matter. So there's got to be, there'll be some sort of percentage. So I just would like to see more of it.
Oh, wow, there's a lot more, and I'm reading all this.
Yeah. All right. Ted, anything on that?
Yeah, I don't believe in postponement indefinitely, can't be brought up again, it could be postponed through his current meeting. I don't think it would be.
Exactly. You can bring it up again at the next meeting, but postpone indefinitely means you can't bring it up.
And it also needs a second.
Second.
I mean, so an asset for what, for this? Is that what we're talking about for the?
The motion to postpone indefinitely needs a second. We've already got a motion on the floor concerning the support of House Bill 76 and Senate Bill 76. The motion to postpone indefinitely is only.
I guess my question is, is you got, he read it, you seconded it, you don't want it to send to a vote?
Well, that's the question.
We've already talked about it, and there'll be.
It takes a majority to do it.
I'm not voting till.
Did I get a second?
Can you have, I gave you a second.
There's a motion. All right. Then we vote. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Mr. President, according to order.
There's a motion already on the floor to be resolved. You know, you can't make a motion to postpone.
Yes, I can, read your book, read your book, Luigi, come on, guys.
What page is that?
Well, I don't have a page, I'm sorry. Can you use an index?
I'm not on the books, so I'm looking it up on the internet. Be happy to look at your book.
I can make a motion to postpone indefinitely, which supersedes your motion, we need to vote on that if it had a second.
That's correct.
Is that correct, Ed?
Yes.
So it's a motion to postpone until at least next meeting?
Right.
So it's a roll call on that, and then if it passes, then the motion's postponed. If it doesn't pass, then we vote on the main motion.
Okay.
All right. Did you get a second?
Yes. Miss Dean.
I just, I mean, I just, I, you know, I was, like I said, I.
Okay, we need to stop talking.
Yeah.
I'm trying to read, Luigi, I'm not trying to go next to you.
I guess, I mean, I don't.
Can we do this next month, please?
Say again?
Can we just do this next month so I can read this?
I can withdraw my motion if that's what you want.
I would just like a little more time to read it.
I'm just being honest with you, Luigi, I don't want to just say yes, then read and go, oh, well.
It's like 200 pages. Yeah, but I also, I'm not going to want to say that I don't agree with, with, I don't agree with some of the things in there, because I do, I do agree with some of the things.
I agree with a lot.
And so.
That'd be fine.
There's a motion, a second on the floor.
I'd like to withdraw the motion.
I just don't want to get an argument, I just want to look this up.
I agree with you, it gives me time to find out about this postponement.
You do that. Keep them after that.
All right. Luigi, are you going to withdraw your motion?
Yes, I just did that.
All right, so then.
Do you want me to second?
Okay. No.
Oh, we draw mine as well.
All right, so you had two items?
Yes.
All right.
I'd like to be, to introduce the following motion, as I stated earlier a month ago. I request reimbursement of my personal legal fees that were expended in the execution of my responsibilities and duties as an elected school board director, and my oath of office is supported by the court order. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Discussion?
So what's the?
Discussion?
Yeah, yeah. What's the motion again?
Pay him back this money.
Pay him the $30,300.
I request remission of my personal legal fees as submitted that were expended in the execution of my responsibilities and duties. I'm sorry, can you hear me? As an elected school board director, and my oath of office is supported by the court order.
What's the amount?
I think you can compute this.
I can't answer that.
As far as I know, the amount that, that the, my junior director requesting is about $30,000, that has been submitted to all school board members. Now, can we discuss, go to the discussions?
Yeah.
No, if anybody wants to discuss, they can do so.
Okay. I believe that there is a need to go back and explain the history of what this motion is all about and the facts. I truly believe that information I'm giving tonight is to educate and enlighten the facts of the issue. During the May 12, 2016 Board meeting, a motion was placed on the floor to deny me an elected official to review the invoices of the district's officer. I believe the motion passed by the majority was written based on false premises. I then decided to have the Court of Common Pleas review the action of the board, which is my duty in accordance to public school code. On August 31, 2017, the court decided, ordered, and supported me to check the invoices as requested in the performance of my duties and responsibilities. The board on November 19, 2017, agreed with the Court of Common Pleas and decided to direct the former so contented here to withdraw the appeal to the Commonwealth Court, which the Naxalow firm had prepared. Further, on June 14, 2018, the present board, that's, that's right here right now, added and administered guidelines to Policy 616, which describes procedures to follow by any school director when he or she decides to review financial statements, financial documents, including invoices from anybody. This action by the present board eliminated the possibility that another incident to deny the review of invoices or financial documents in general. This action demonstrated that the board by unanimous action agrees that any director has the right to review any financial documents before voiding. It is safe to conclude that my legal action, which was decided favorably by the Crawford County Court of Common Please, is a positive outcome. If the board agrees that I had the right to review any financial documents, payment before voiding for the approval payments, then it is not only fair, but legal that my action was based on my responsibilities and duties as a board director to perform my duties as sworn and dictated by the oath of office. Hence, my request for reimbursement for my personal legal fees is justified and legal. I bring to the attention of the board directors and taxpayers that directors are not compensated for the time for the board activities. However, directors are reimbursed for expenses incurred for their related expenses of district business. The responsibilities and duties to verify financial documents such as invoices is one of the, one of them is the administrative guidelines to Policy 616 shows. My dear directors, thank you for listening to my discussion, and I await your decision and vote.
I have one thing to say. Obviously, this involves my invoices that we've been talking about for everyone. I can't comment legally as a legal opinion, but I think the board needs a legal opinion before it moves.
I agree.
I can hear that, sir.
I said, I believe the board needs a legal opinion.
I agree. Would you agree that being independent?
Yeah, he said not.
He said not.
Yeah, he said not. And Luigi?
I mean, I think, and I'm the only, the only thing I'm going to comment on, because it directly involved me at that first time, was I'll just reiterate what Ted said. Everything that we went forward from that point on with all those things was based on legal advice that we had. So I certainly will not vote on anything anymore. But still, when our attorney says that we need to have a legal opinion, I won't, I won't say anything until we get a legal opinion.
Can you elaborate on why we might get a legal opinion?
The board has an obligation to spend money on things that are appropriate under the school code. The question is, if a person, if they don't do that, they could be subject to search order.
And I guess the, I don't want to get in a lengthy discussion, not tonight especially. So I, I need some time. And I do have a couple of questions for you, Luigi, but I just don't feel this is the appropriate time to place an asset on. So I'm going to keep this very simple meeting. So if we could table it, I don't table it right, or if we put this on hold and have a special meeting to discuss some time.
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
I'm sorry.
I can.
No, no, I'll speak up. I can be loud. Trust me. I can be loud. I personally will not vote on anything to do with this tonight. I would like to ask you a few questions, but I don't think tonight at this place is, or this time is the proper time to ask these questions.
Okay.
We have a few things to discuss that you and I had discussed back when I first got on the board. And I have a couple of concerns. So I would like to have a special meeting and discuss this further. Then we can take a vote on it if everybody agrees upon it at that time. But at this, I will not vote on it.
Whatever. You're going to have, you're going to have to have another attorney.
It's something that precedents it once scheduled.
Oh, no, I'm just giving you my honest, I'm being honest with you.
I agree. It's okay.
I just asked Dr. Glasspool if he could have an attorney, I mean, review it and give us a legal opinion.
Do you want to have a special meeting to?
Well, I have some questions.
Yeah.
But I don't want to get into it tonight.
Yeah.
It's already 7:30. People would like to get going. I'd like to get going. But I have some questions, and there's a couple of things that I want to remind you of.
Okay.
That there's a couple of things that I, I really disagree with paying if we do go that way. So there's more to discuss.
Okay.
Than just saying yeah or no. You don't want to.
I don't know why, I don't know why there's anything to discuss.
Okay.
Well, I mean, this man, this man chose.
Bob, stop.
This man chose to sue his own school board and wants his money back. And my vote is no, and I don't care if it's today or tomorrow, next year.
That's fine.
That's it.
Hey, Luigi.
Good for you.
Can I, what if we do this? If he contacts a lawyer, gets.
You mean Glasspool?
Glasspool, gets us our opinion, we can talk about it in executive session before the October meeting. We'll put it on the agenda Thursday, and we'll vote, and we'll be done with it. Because honestly, I'm tired of talking about it.
They saw mine.
I know a lot of people aren't. I mean, so.
I agree with you, Mr. President.
So if, if that's all right with you, we'll just have Dr. Glasspool come up with an independent attorney, not Knox, not Ted's office, not, you know, anybody we've used before, just give us an opinion.
I would say you go out completely outside of this, this, this.
Right. Crawford County.
And I meant the motion to.
Yeah, you want Pittsburgh or Cleveland.
To wait till.
If you withdraw your motion, it sounds like the thing's going to take a life of its own. There's going to be a legal opinion once that opinion is, is gathered.
You're also assuming I can get it in 30 days.
I was going to say, this could be.
I'm going to be honest with you guys. Like I.
And that gives time, time for you to.
Well, I'm saying, if he can't get a legal opinion, it may be November, is what I said. I'm just letting you know, because we have to have legal opinion.
All I'm saying, Luigi, is as soon as we get a legal opinion, I'll put it on the agenda, and we will vote on it, and we will put it to bed one way or another. I mean, if, if that's okay with you, I mean, as long as we are authorizing him to get us a legal opinion, we'll go that route.
We should be able to get an opinion by the next meeting, right?
Well, that depends on what. Yeah, I'm going to be honest with you. You know, I'm already, I'm not trying to.
Hey, Luigi, this is one.
Contact. I know there's a lot of good school law firms. I'm going to grab a school law firm, either about a Pittsburgh or a Levin out of, in the eastern part of the state.
Fine.
Not one, not one that I have an association with.
Right. I just want to say, right now, we do have a lot going on in the next month. Mr. Glasspool does, or Dr. Glasspool. So he's very busy too. So I'm just saying, it may take.
It might take longer, that's what he's.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I'm not trying to put you off.
Okay.
But we have kids that are, I'm sorry, that are way more important than this right now.
Are you all right with that?
It's fine.
Thank you.
And we do have an agreement and.
Yeah.
Yes.
Everything possible is going to be done.
Yes, we're going to spend more taxpayer money to see if we can give you taxpayer money.
Okay.
See agreement.
Stop.
You just need to withdraw, because we, a motion's on the floor, so.
I withdraw the motion on the fact that that's the board, the majority of the board has agreed to, to get a legal opinion as recommended by the solicitor within the next two months.
Okay. All right.
Any more new business? Board remarks.
Board remarks, let's start with Mary.
Welcome back. Thanks. I hope the kids have a great school year. Teachers have some patience with the computers. They're coming. Parents, please pay attention to your kids, especially your high school kids. I know the PTOs are very active. As soon as your kids seem to hit seventh grade, they still need probably more guidance than to compete at any elementary school. So please support your kids in every way possible. Fall athletes, please be safe. Have a lot of fun. Make a lot of memories. For homecoming, have fun. Congratulations to the kids who qualified for AP. Yay. I think that is fantastic. It's the highest number coming out of the school district ever. And I hope it's a trend of what's going to continue to come. So have a great school.
I just want to welcome everyone back. And if you have not had the opportunity to see the Maplewood Elementary Makerspace Room, I encourage you to go see it. It is really nice. My daughter loves tech. She, yeah, she's all for it. It's really nice. There's lots of cool things in there. I was playing with some stuff at Open House. So I'd really encourage everyone to take a peek at it.
I just say welcome back to everybody. You know, I look forward to fall sports, volleyball, basketball. I say cheerleading, because it's what some girls do. It's hard to watch sometimes, but I don't get interested in the games more than that. I thank the administration for all the work. We had a lot of stuff coming into the new year, and I know that we have some bugs to work out. I think they're doing a great job. That's it.
Well, I'm just going to say welcome back to everybody. I do have a piece of bad news. A volunteer kid at Sacred Town Elementary School, Karen Rickman, she volunteered for 10 years, loved my wife's class, but all elementary class, she passed suddenly a few weeks ago. So many teachers in Sacred Town Elementary miss her dearly. And I just want to offer my thoughts and prayers to her family, and she was an awesome person. She's going to be sorely missed.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. Glasspool, for doing a pretty decent job. I can't say a perfect job, because I'm sure you find this problem coming up. I was, I was, I went around checking the parents' age, and I think it was a very successful thing to do. As a matter of fact, it was successful. They even recruited me to join the Boy Scouts. And the other thing I would like to point out is that yesterday was September 11. And it's a former New Yorker that, it's, I'm concerned, I can never forget the day, especially when I saw the second plane on TV peeling the second building. It was a tragedy, and unfortunately, we know it was done not by airplanes, but it was done by people. People with an experienced point of view that they had about our society, our way of thinking, and to the point that they even call Americans a bunch of Satan's. Well, I'd like to remind those people that Americans stick together when it comes to America and accept them all, the people. And I hope that will never happen. And if it happens, people's going to be sorry, at least with the present president we have. Well, it's a sad story to bet that we lost over 3,000 Americans. And some of the people in the building were immigrants too. It's a shame, they, when you put a bomb to harm Americans and residents in America, there's no way you can dedicate, separate your friends or enemies. So let's hope never to see that again, and keep our country safe, because we owe a lot to this nation. That's it.
Very good. We don't agree often, but I agree with that. It's a very somber day yesterday, and I still remember when I was a teacher in the fifth grade classroom on that day when that happened. It was just horrendous and horrible. I agree, we should never have to see that again. But on a later note, welcome back to all the teachers, kids, sports staff, everybody. They seem to be doing a wonderful job so far, as always. Fall sports teams are well underway. As Mr. Schellenberger said from Sacred Town High School, the golf team and the volleyball team are doing exceptionally well. And I know all the other teams around the district are doing well, trying very hard. And good luck to them, and we'll look forward to hopefully seeing some of those teams in the playoffs. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I agree with what everybody said. I don't really have anything to add, except. Amazing start to the school year. I know there's a lot of work put in by everybody, and it really showed, there's been a lot of positive feedback from parents, from teachers, from the community. And it's just, there's always going to be hiccups, there's always going to be bumps in the road. But it really showed, our fall sports were off and running. Maplewood's 3-0 on the year, having a spectacular year, beat West Middlesex last Friday in football. This Friday, they play Cambridge Springs, and that should be a good one, out at the Wood. Sacred Town is going to try to pick up their first win Friday out of the pasture of pain in Eisenhower, trying to get their first win out of the last 21.
Yeah.
It's really called the pasture of pain. Yes, Eisenhower, it's Maplewood of the north. The cross-country teams are out and running. I looked up the standings, and I don't really understand cross-country enough to say our standings, but great job to everyone that's out there volunteering their time to run. That's not one of my passions, but I'm glad that people are out there running.
Really?
I've, I've run in the past. I did a lot of running at boot camp, and that was enough. Our boy soccer team is, is very competitive. Erie Times has them at 0-2 and 1. I know they beat Cash. I don't know if that was a friendly or whatever the soccer terms are. And girls volleyball, again, we're dominant. We are amazing in girls volleyball throughout the district. Our golf team, we got updates on them. And with so much happening in our district, it's difficult to keep up with all of it. And that's why we need everybody to be on board, everyone to be talking to each other. We need principals and board members and teachers and parents and students all together getting the word out. Because we're doing amazing things. Our activity buzz is doing great. It's really just starting to get the, the wheels rolling.
Good.
That was a good one. You know, beyond that, we've got the RCF, we've got a lot of stuff happening, and it's hard to keep up with all of it. But we need more parents involved, getting more word out there, so everyone can take advantage of it. And to touch a little bit on what Mr. DeFrancesco said about 9/11, today is 9/12. Seen a lot of things out there where they talk about how great it was on 9/12, where we all came together, where it didn't matter where you were from, who you were, what political party you belonged to, what, how tall or short you were. Everyone came together, and we were all Americans. And I think that's one of the things that really is special to me about, you know, 9/12 is understanding what we can be when we put our minds to it. And I really see that happening a lot here in our district. Thank you.
Well said.
I'd like to welcome everybody back this year. I'll keep mine short and sweet. I did have the privilege of watching our two bands, Maplewood and Sacred Town, perform last weekend. They did an awesome job. It was a tough competition. There was 17 or 18 bands, and some of them were quite huge and very well organized, but our kids have done an awesome job. Looking forward to seeing them compete more.
All right, the only thing I have to add is I'd like to thank the parents. I don't know how many of you guys went to Open House, but I've been going to Open House for 16 years. And the Open House this year, they were all on the same night. I saw more people at Cambridge High School than I think I've ever seen there. And it was just nice to see parents being involved and getting out and supporting their kids. So I just want to thank the parents for that. And that's all I got.
One announcement, the board met in executive session on September 9, and prior to tonight's meeting for personnel, negotiations, and litigation.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All in.